Can I have a motion to open the meeting?
So.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Yep.
Sorry, second.
Okay, so I didn't hear.
It's okay.
Thank you. You want to take vote online or just do it by hand?
I think I'm logged in.
I'm logged in.
Am I not logged in?
I'm in.
Yeah, opened it up.
Resetting, hold on. I'm going to eye Mary, but voting again.
Okay, could please stamp your touch? I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation, our land, our liberty and our justice. All right, we're going to open the meeting for public input number one, rules of public input. There are sheets on the chairs. Summary is any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify a single spokesperson. Speakers have up to three minutes. Speakers will address remarks to the president. Speakers will conduct themselves in a civil and respectful manner. Speakers will not address personnel or students. If a speaker wants to speak a second time, they may speak at public input two. The board president has the right to discontinue public input at any time. Is there anyone here for public input number one? There is a sheet of paper up there, please, please print your name for the record. Anyone for public input? Yes.
Hello, everybody. Michelle Leo here. I would like to state tonight, and thank you, Mr. Nichols, for responding in a kind way to my discussion of security. I appreciate your efforts in that direction. And as regarding to the Marsden projects, I think it would behoove the board, I've expressed this before, but I also would encourage you to consider a public forum, making an announcement soon potentially, if that is the plan, because I think there's a lot going on in the community where there's some information that is being put out. It's my understanding there's someone who actually thinks the bond is for $16 million. There's been some really broad misinformation being disseminated, and I think that the people who have the power to, I can, I can do my best, as I have been, to try and suppress the disinformation and clarify things, but you are more, you are, you have great power, and, and I trust that you, I continue to trust that you use it well, because you have, in my opinion. So I would implore you to put forth some type of public statement, whether it's a forum opportunity or just a public meeting, and really put forth some factual numbers, so that there's no longer any dispute amongst the community members who are putting great effort into dispelling lies. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so there's a question there, so would anybody like to respond to a public forum or anything like that? I mean, I also have a public forum. I think it's imperative that we do do it.
Yeah, I think for a public forum too, you know, as Michelle said, there's, there seem to be some signs up and some information where there's a misunderstanding about whatever that's about. And so I think it would be very helpful to clarify those things and for people to fully understand what's getting voted on now. And I just, one other thing you made, point you made, I just want to correct slightly when you said we had great power. We, you know, we have the power to put something together, but we don't have any power, you know?
Agreed.
Agreed. And it's really, I mean, everything here is a public vote.
Yeah.
So, you know, the vote now is just for the 6 million bonds for the purchase of the land, or if you can go into a public forum, anything after later, and anything else would have a vote attached to it. So there's no board going off and making decisions. All we can do is present information, give people the opportunity, so. To get involved.
Great.
We've said all along that we were going to have public forums and votes, so.
Right.
I think it's set a time sooner than later.
Items for discussion at the end of the agenda, we should, might be taken out of calculus. And guys, just let you know, after someone speaks, it's a down, we're going to, we're going to answer those questions, because I feel like people need to hear this over and over again, but I don't want to go back and forth with the audience in any of those conversations. If we could just run it to us, that would be great, so. Okay. Great. Anyone else for public input number one? Scott? Okay.
So we have, we have another speaker. He's there.
Oh, sorry, I'm, sorry.
People can't see me when I'm sharing. Please sign your name on the. Chris Tyse, Sag Harbor resident, I'll make it really fast, two things. Again, I want to support the purchase of the Marsden lots. I think it's the best thing for not just the students currently and future students, but for the community at large, and I hope that this community can stand behind its children and support the purchase. Secondly, I would like to recommend that the board support Anne Macacy's campaign to remain on BOSIS. She was a board event member here for about 18 years, has been on BOSIS forever. She's Sag Harbor through and through, her kids went here, and we're so lucky, we have a resident of Sag Harbor, who's been so committed to our school district to be on BOSIS, so that's it. Thank you.
I can respond once she sits down?
Yeah.
Nice to see you again, Chris. Very nice hat.
You know, you say not to engage.
You said once they sit down.
But it's engaging, okay? Come on. Okay. Okay. Superintendent's report, Mr. Nichols.
Is there anybody else?
No, he said no. Right, Scott? Yeah. That's all right, no worries. Check me out.
So I'm just going to briefly touch upon Marsden and maybe clarify a few things. I was away last week, but followed online in terms of some information that's out there. So tonight, the, the Board of Education is going to be voting to authorize the board president to my left to sign a contract of sale for the purchase of Marsden. And that vote's going to take place on the 16th of May. One of the things that I've seen out there in the public is some information about a 72 lot parking lot, as well as athletic fields and this and that. I just want to give a brief historical overview and clarify a few points. First, as per previous comments, our discussions originated with the program director of the Community Preservation Fund in the summer of 2021. Those discussions at that time resulted in subsequent discussions that included Alex Kriegsmann, myself, and the program director of the Community Preservation Fund in the spring of 2022. Those discussions centered on a, an agreement where the district would partner with the town and build recreational facilities. We clarified to the town early on that we, in, within that context, would wish to build an athletic field, but from the town's perspective, the way we were going to partner was, we would use those fields for our students, but those recreational facilities would be available to the public. And we worked hard with the town to try to have a deal come to fruition. Unfortunately, it did not. And then the Board of Education made a decision to put a bond out to purchase this independently. And what's important with regard to that decision is that we are no longer partnering with the town and are thus free to do what it is that we would want to do with that property should the vote pass. So before, we were sort of restricted by the discussions with the Community Preservation Fund. This time around, we're not. And so when there's information out there that says that there's going to be a 72 lot, parking lot, it's important to know that that request came from the town of Southampton in a memorandum on January 23rd, 2023, where they wanted that information for, at that time, the collaboration between the town and the district. So we produced that plan to satisfy the request that they made. We did not produce that out of the blue, it was to satisfy something that they asked for. Again, that relationship with the town did not move forward, and our use of the properties has not been decided at this point. And the best way I can say it is that this, this is simply an acquisition, a proposal to acquire land adjacent to the school district. The school district has many facility needs. There's been, for those who serve on the facility committee, there's been extensive talks about building a wet lab that would enhance our science program. There have been talks about the current condition of the middle school, high school gymnasium. Those facility needs could very well dovetail with the Marsden property should the proposition pass. An athletic field could also be discussed, but by no means has any of this been decided. So when I see signs out there saying that there's going to be parking and it's going to be an athletic field, that's just simply not true at this point. That's, those are issues that are going to be discussed. So I think it's important for the public to know that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's a lot of folks, and it's their right to do it, who spend a lot of time asking the town not to move forward, and then the town doesn't move forward, and then they're complaining about it. It reminds me of, you know, the story of the kid who kills his parents and then begs for mercy as an orphan. So, but to me, the critical point is we're, we're starting from scratch, and that, to the extent there were specifics, it was driven by specifics that the town wanted, and that's not happening there.
And so with the town, they had wanted more parking spaces, because it was going to be open to the community and would be additional parking potentially for the parking lot itself. 72 spaces were never identified as a facility need. We were never looking at trying to take a piece of land and max it out, you know, to two, to anything. That was all because the CPF arrangement would be that this would be community access, and they felt the more access on facilities they could provide, the better.
Correct.
Now, I would just add that the, the whole idea, right, is to purchase the land first and then decide as a community later what we want. And so it would be driven by the various facility needs, but we would put out surveys and other kinds of things to get input from the whole community about what we should have there. So it very may, may end up being a field, since that has garnered a lot of public support, but that's only one of a few different options. I know I've seen some posts on social media saying, well, if the school board tells you that it's not going to be a field, they're gaslighting, right? And I just don't think that's a fair characterization, because I would contend, actually, yeah, it could end up being a field, but that's what democracy is about, right? So don't say, don't call it gaslighting. I think probably some people just have some fears that what maybe what they consider the majority of people in our community to want is maybe not what they want, and that's fine, and it's all fine for everybody to have different views on this, that's what we're here for.
Yeah.
But it just hasn't been decided yet.
Yeah, and the formal input will really tell us that. I mean, we had started community forums, but they were, you know, limited, and then they really got hamstrung by the fact that the CPF partnership was dictating exactly what that needed to be, so we couldn't have a fully open forum. So a much more holistic scenario. And I think the other important thing is, you know, it's a $6 million bond that purely facilitates a purchase. We don't have money to develop that. There is no development plan, there's no bond for that, there's no.
So therefore, you can't have an accurate cost to.
Yeah. They completely don't have anything to do development with.
Right.
So that will be probably a much longer process, because now we can look at all uses, right? And we can look at this very holistically in combination with the school's current facilities and, and a much longer term thought process, too, right? So, you know, many things. And, and those costs then come down to a completely separate bond that will come in the future, which again would be up for vote and up for the community.
Very. Anyone else? No?
I think the district has needs, athletic or otherwise, as Jeff pointed out, that this property can accommodate potentially in some fashion, and we're not going to get to that conversation unless we actually have control of the property and are able to do something with it. So this is the first step in reaching that goal.
Yes, you're absolutely right. Good. Anything else or your superintendent's report? That's it.
I just wanted to clarify.
Clarify, I agree. Thank you very much for that. Hopefully, it is listened upon. So I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer for our final, pretty much.
We have one more.
I know, we, we, I know we have.
We have a hearing.
We have the hearing, but this is pretty much it right here.
Yeah.
And a lot of work has gone on to make this happen, and we're very excited about it, so thank you.
Okay, so tonight's presentation is a little bit shorter than the other presentations we've had, because on May 8th, we, we're going to hold our budget hearing, and the budget hearing is going to be a very comprehensive review of the budget, and it's also going to talk about the contingency budget and anything that we would have to reduce in our budget, just in case the budget doesn't pass. So that's going to, that's going to occur on May 8th. But tonight, the board is scheduled to adopt our budget for next year. Our proposed budget for next year is $48,063,027. This carries a 4.5% budget to budget increase and a 1.88% tax levy increase. They are also scheduled to adopt a property tax report card. The property tax report card is all of the information that we're required to send to New York State, New York State Education Department before the budget vote. It contains all the budget to budget increases, tax levy information, it also includes information on our reserves, and both the property tax report card in English and Spanish is attached to the agenda, and you can see that the form is due April 24th. Some of the information on the property tax report card is pre-populated, and one of those pre-populated items, as you can see, is the 8% increase in the CPI, and that was the increase that occurred during January 1st, 2022 to January 1st, 2023. And this CPI increase is really unprecedented. And when you look at all the prior years, going back to 1213, we've never had a CPI increase at 8%. Last year, the increase was 4.7%. This did, this was one of the biggest challenges in developing the budget this year. We had to develop the budget around an increase in pretty much everything we buy, all of our materials, supplies, services, utilities, this affected, this did also affect our borrowing costs, and. It is really the consumer price index, and it really is the change in prices that occurred during, this during a calendar year. So this is actually from January 1st, 2022 up until January 1st, 23. So when, you know, people see their gas prices going up, when people see their groceries, the price of the eggs and milk and everything going up, this is all incorporated in that CPI increase. And like, when you see what the increases have been in the past, this is really, really the first time we've ever had to address the increase this high. And for us, when we do go through budget increases this year, we do explain to everyone, you know, we needed to increase the line because of gas, we needed to increase the line because of utilities and so on. And we did though, we were able to keep that tax levy increase though very low. So the tax levy increase is 1.88%, and we were able to do that because we are projecting to receive more money in tuition next year, and we are, we are also tapping into our reserves. So a lot of that funding for next year's budget is coming out of our reserves that are right now very well funded.
Can you, I just want to just note, I think you've just done a remarkable job with this, Jennifer, and that those numbers on that bottom row are pretty dramatic. Everybody who lives in the world knows how much increase in costs are going. I think they're actually a lot more than 8%, but to be able to do that and to keep that tax increase so much lower than the limit, I think is great. So I commend you for it. It's a merit.
Yeah, it really is, you know, thanks to everybody who took part in planning the budget, but this is where we really want to be. You know, every year, we'd love to go out with something that is around the levy limit or, or under, you know, around 2%. So hopefully, this inflation factor will be a lot lower next year. This is the summary of the budget. We went through this during the last presentation, and we also, though, have the detailed budget now online. So if you go onto our website, our homepage, and you click on the link for budget information, you'll see the proposed 2324 budget detail, and you'll see line by line every single item that was budgeted for next year. And I've also summarized that in the slide that you've also seen here, which really does show what, what the increases are, are made up of. And the employee benefits increase is the biggest increase to our budget going into next year. We, we participate in the New York State Health Insurance Plan. The New York State plan is basically, the family plan for New York State is increasing by 15%. Going into the current school year, we had to deal with addressing a 13% increase, but next year, we have a 15% increase, and that's also unprecedented, because we have not seen double-digit increases in health insurance costs back to back in years. So that $938,000 is driven by that increase. We also have a transfer of capital, which is our banking renovation, which is a large piece of the increase, but this is actually a positive thing. This is basically in line with the board's commitment to maintain our facilities. We did a lot of work this year, we had our masonry project that we completed, we just completed, completed repairs to the middle school roof, and we've been replacing floors, we've been renovating bathrooms, and we've been just ongoing trying to address our facilities needs, and most of those other repairs and have not caused the taxpayers anything. We've actually been able to tap into our reserves for those repairs. And this summer, we are going to be starting our HVC project, and we're all going to start replacing a lot of the gene events in the elementary school. But these bathroom renovations are much needed, those bathrooms are about 20 years old now, so this will be a really great thing for high school. You'll see that the $245,000 is really directly related to inflation, all of those increases. Our salaries overall are actually, our salaries from year to year are increasing by less than 1%. It's about a 0.76 increase, but as a percentage of the budget increase, it's less than half a percent. Our salaries overall are increasing into next year. Our borrowing costs are going up, and unfortunately, we've had to double that line. This year, we budgeted $150,000 for our tan borrowing cost, but next year, we had to increase that line by $300,000 because of the huge rise in interest rates. And then, of course, we have our utilities and fuel. That $131,000 is really mostly driven by fuel. We have to purchase fuel for our buses and all of our facilities vehicles also. BOSIS, BOSIS had increased their budget this year, too. So BOSIS overall, their administrative budget went up 3.18%, and that's also an agenda to be increased, to be approved by the board tonight, and they haven't had an increase that high in years also. We have our facilities truck replacement, that facilities truck is about 15 years old, and it is being, it is like rusted out a lot, and we had pictures on it during a previous presentation, so we really need that truck, especially if we do have another winter where we have to do a lot of snow removal. So that just reconciles that budget to budget increase of the $2,069,700. And voters will see a couple of propositions on the ballot, and the first one will be to approve the budget, and, and the budget increase will cost taxpayers approximately $67 a year, or about $5.60 a month if this budget is approved. You'll also have the proposition for the Marsden Street property purchase, which is proposition two, and the voters are approving the use of $3.4 million in capital reserve funds, and they're also going to be approving and allowing us to go out and borrow $6 million to finance the first thing of purchase price for Marsden Street. We are trying.
Might be good, just to reiterate on that last slide, as you mentioned at the last meeting, I think that's very helpful, that that $6 million equates to $47 a year in additional taxes for somebody with a million dollar home.
Yes, and thanks for pointing that out, that the approval of this proposition is not going to have any impact at all on next year's budget or next year's tax levy for 2324, but for the 2425 budget year, taxpayers will see an increase of about $47, and that really is the payment back of the bond's patient no interest that we're going to have to borrow sometime in July. But for next year, there's not going to be any impact at all on the tax levy.
And that's $45 per year.
Yes.
And it goes up, I think, to $67, though.
Eventually, when we go to bond. And we'll, we'll go ahead and show all those details again, and all the presentations and all of those numbers are currently online, too. We are also trying to establish another capital reserve, and this is for technology equipment purchases, security systems, and any infrastructure upgrade, upgrades that go along with those items. So right now, we have a repair reserve that we have been using, and we also have the facilities capital reserve. So this reserve will allow us to put aside money and save money for future security-related improvements and also for any technology upgrades that we need in future years. So this is just great to have, this also will not have any impact on the 2324 budget or tax levy. This will just allow us to really authorize us to open up another savings account, really for that specific purpose. And this is for the historical museum, so the historical museum has asked us to put this proposition on a ballot. It's to rate $75,000 each year to support their program, and if voter approved, this will cost taxpayers around $6.48 per year for the historical museum and all the important work that they do.
Maybe worth mentioning on, on this slide, we already have this approved with the Wailing Museum.
Yes, the Wailing Museum. We, we send them, we send the Wailing Museum $50,000 a year in tax levy every year. We've been doing that for quite a long time now, at least 10 years. And this would be now for the historical museum.
And that would be the library, too.
The library has their own budget vote, but we do levy the taxes for them. But the library had the budget vote later, later in September, I believe it is. But the, yeah, the $75,000 would be a huge help to them and to maintain their programs, and this amount will stay the same every year until, until, if we go back to the taxpayers, if they needed more money, we would have to get taxpayers to approve an increase, so this would stay the same indefinitely.
Some programs with the parents as well.
Oh, yeah. Field of choice, all the time. So as I said earlier, we have a budget hearing scheduled for May, and that's when we're going to review the entire budget, and then we're also going to talk about if the budget is voted down. So if the budget is voted down, we are going to have to make some cut to the budget, and we'll let everybody know exactly what needs, what will have to be cut, just in case the budget isn't approved. We also have the, the annual meeting on May 16th, which is the budget vote and election day, and then absentee ballot applications, you can contact Mary, and she'll be able to provide anyone who needs an absentee ballot, what he wants, with an application.
So I just want to be clear, too, because Mary has gotten several calls for people who don't understand that if you're a second homeowner and you're registered to vote in New York City, that Mary is not able to send you a ballot, and that she cannot change your voter registration like that. It doesn't happen that way. And anybody who wants to take issue with that can reach out to either Mr. Nichols or myself to deal with, because.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not just the city, it's your primary residence where you retired.
Yeah. So my son who lives in Florida can't vote for his mother, unfortunately, it's just not going to happen, so it's okay. So just know that, yeah, that Mary's wanted to call, but you have to be registered to vote in this, in this district to get a ballot. And I just want to say that I have seen budgets tie. People say, oh, it's 6040, I've seen budgets tied twice since the 2% tax cap has come in, it's been a very nice, you know, win for the district. But through that tax cap, we have been able to maintain all of our programs, we've been able to enhance our programs, we were able to institute international baccalaureate. So anybody who's like, oh my God, our kids are going without, they're not, and we're just doing, they're doing just an amazing job at the administrative office with the work that they do and crunching the numbers to get it to where it is and continue the amazing programs that we have, from arts to trips to Italy, to class, to athletics, to the curriculum, to robotics in Texas. So just know that nothing gets cut when you see these numbers, and 1.88 is probably going to be one of the lowest, if not the lowest, at least Eastern Long Island. So kudos to the administrative team that made that happen. So now that we have that done, any questions from the board for Jennifer?
Craig.
On that tax levy, for, we made that slide, right?
Yeah, so during the last, last presentation, we have a full slide showing the taxpayer impact, and every year that taxpayers would be, which year that, that impact will increase or decrease, we show 50 years, 23, 24 is being zero impact, 24, 25, all the way going out to 2043, 2044, voters will see. Uh, voters will see. Yes, it was in total, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars, um, in total. If, uh, yeah, during that period.
I just wanted to make this clear because I have the same thing where I saw this opposed world, one person put up. Several taxes are going to go fifty-five hundred dollars because of.
Oh, no, that, that's over a twenty-year period.
And it's not fifty-five hundred.
I calculated that. That would be what you would not go to have a system where we are.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, that's not the average.
So, so just to, to clarify Ron's statement and your statement. It's seven hundred and whatever it was in some total.
Mm-hmm.
Over twenty years.
Over twenty years. Yeah. It was, it was, um, yeah, about forty-one, forty-seven going into later years. In the earlier years, we were talking less than thirty dollars a year.
And, and that'll be addressed in more detail at the forum.
Yeah.
But a big part of that is also that.
I just want to make sure that the, the public understands that this is what the real numbers are because there's.
Yes.
I've been watching this social media, there's so much misinformation.
Right.
And false narratives. That it's just, it's, it's not doing the service to the public and citizens of this.
And this is really worst-case scenario numbers because my work with their fiscal agent, they really did give us the numbers at a much higher rate, like. Because right now the interest rates are higher. So, but if, if, we are going to hold on to that ban for a while and we're going to hopefully wait till interest rates go down. And, um, you know, as soon as they, they do go down, which we hope will happen within the next five or six years, we'll go ahead and we'll bond then. So I mean, we're carrying interest rates right now on our other projects. Some of them have like a one percent interest rate. So. These interest rates were all calculated around three, four percent. So this is really worst-case scenario.
Yeah, and just reminder that that slide that Ron's talking about and that you just were referencing, it's, it should be on board docs available publicly to anybody.
And it's also available online, um, all of the budget presentations. Um, can you show? Would you be able to go online and just show everyone where it is?
So essentially it's.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
And that might be. It might be something that's helpful to do in conjunction with the.
Well, we'll show everybody.
The very pertinent information and make sure that's front and center, so.
And then similarly, today, we're, we have it on the docket to approve the budget. So presumably shortly after that, the budget newsletter will go out to all the families. And so there'll be a tangible. Bookstore that's going out to everybody as well.
So this is the homepage. You're going to click on budget information, which is right in the middle of the homepage. And then you'll see on the side, you'll see all the budget presentations. So we just talked about, uh, the proposed budget detail. So you could just click on that real quick. And, um, this is for everyone who really wants to know all of the, everything that is included in this budget. It's all right here in this budget detail. Um, and then when you go back to that other. That page, the budget page. If you click on, on the April third presentation. Which is the updated revenue, yep. And you go all the, all the way to the end of this presentation, you'll see. The breakdown in cost for the Marsden project. It's also included in the presentation before that too. I believe it was the March, uh, presentation too. So.
Probably the next one.
Yeah, let's see.
No, it's a.
Keep going.
It's a graph.
Yeah.
Oh, it's actually, oh, yeah, here it, here it is.
Yeah.
So, um, this is the Marsen, uh, property purchase. This is the cost per year. And then the next slide, I believe I summarized. Yeah, I summarized the cost, uh, for the twenty years. So that would be, uh. Five years of a ban and fifteen years of a bond.
It's really the maximum manual cost for a million dollar hope is forty-one dollars.
Yes.
And, and based on the valuation that's listed there.
Yeah, so it would be, um, for twenty-four, twenty-five, that would be the first year that we would pay interest on our bond anticipation note. And that would be eighteen dollars and fourteen cents. In twenty-five, twenty-six, we're going to have to start paying interest and principal on that bond anticipation note. And that's why that goes up to twenty-eight ninety-four. So each year after that, we're going to be paying down some principal. And then once we go to bonds, we're going to be bonding a much lower amount than the six million. And, um, that bond will be for fifteen years and that's going to jump up to the forty-one, forty-seven per year.
I just want to make sure it's clear because there's so much nonsense out there.
Yeah, we can also put this slide on the Marsden property link. Another link for Marsden property purchase, then we could add that to that tomorrow.
Yeah.
Most people don't have time to, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, it's better to have it just right there so where people can see.
This person posted that, that number. Who's telling you that? It's crazy.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I have a lot of confidence in the people in this district, or I think that. People can make up whatever they want, but I think the facts will be in everyone's hands and people will be able to make a informed decision.
But in terms of making things up, right, people can't make up whatever they want. I, I actually spent a bunch of time this weekend looking at. You know. New York taught tort law and fraudulent misrepresentations, fraud under common law. There's a lot of actionable items that people who are spreading misinformation should be aware that you can, it's not just a lie, right? It's actionable. So people should really, you know. Before they make statements saying that. There's a sixteen million dollar project up for vote in May. They should really research some of these laws because. So far, we haven't taken any action against individuals for the fraudulent misrepresentations they've made at our public meetings. But personally. If this continues, because it's been going on for, for over a year now, depending on different issues.
Yeah.
I would urge us as a board to consider that sometime in the future.
Good point.
I. I'm not opposed. I mean, and the other part is, is that, you know, we're here volunteering our time. And we see how many people put their names in to volunteer their time and really be there for a hundred percent of the time through thick and thin and different projects. So. I'm with you on that one. I think it's time.
I, I think all of this sort of segues also into Michelle's comment earlier, the need for. At least one forum where we can clearly outline to the public, um. The facts. And if people have questions, do our best to answer them in, um. In a transparent way.
Yes, questions. Yeah. Questions. Yeah, not narratives, but questions. That's the important part of it. We need to get facts out. Okay, well, again, excellent budget, Jennifer. Thank you. Um, we're going to move on to, um, board action items and we're going to take, um, several of them. Um, one by one. So the first item is the contract sale, seven point one. Of the Marsden Street properties. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Yeah. So, second. Thanks, thank you. Discussion. Okay.
I opened.
You, oh, you opened, okay, I didn't know.
If you wanted to do it online.
Back to the old school method? Yes.
Event unanimous.
Okay. So I will sign that contract after this evening. Um, the second is seven point two and it's to approve the Eastern Suffolk Bocce's administrative budget. Which does have a three percent increase. Uh, which is unusual for them, but again, you know, we're in those. So may I have a motion for seven point two?
Second.
Discussion. Okay, Mary, could you open the voting, please?
Yeah, I said open.
Yes.
How, she's nine?
Yes.
Yeah. Who are you waiting on, Brian?
Yes.
Brian?
They did it.
Oh.
Um, there it is.
I don't know.
Okay, I'm going to, um, seven point three, elect the candidates for the Eastern Suffolk Bocce's board. I'm going to name the five candidates and then I'll ask for a motion. Herman Latif, Susan Lippen, Anne Macacy. William Miller and Catherine Romano. So.
Second.
Discussion. Thank you to Anne Macacy for continuing her due diligence for children. Okay, Mary, may you open the link, please?
Open. Event unanimous.
Wonderful. Congratulations to those people. Uh, may I have a motion for consent agenda items, eight point one through nine point two?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mary, would you open up the voting, please?
Open. Okay, Brian? Event unanimous.
Okay, that concludes, concludes the consent agenda items. So items for discussion. So we've been talking about having a public forum, which I'm a hundred percent for. I think we need to have one. So. When? What are we thinking? Do you think Mary should send out some dates to us?
Yeah.
Um, okay, I would like to get that out. Probably within the next forty-eight hours. So please respond to Mary's email sooner rather than later so we can get that out.
Mary and I will.
And will that forum be held here? Six thirty P M in the library?
Yes. Yes.
The first one. And maybe there'll be one, but they.
There may be two. There may be three. I mean, we'll see how far we can get.
One will, will set for that timeframe.
Yeah. I agree. Is that good with everybody? Are there any other items for discussions? Okay, so we're going to go to public input number two. The same rules for public input number one apply. So if anyone would like to come up to the podium, please do so now.
Two good things. One, I would recommend that the forum be held in the auditorium. Because the last time the board underestimated the, the amount of people showing up. It was like a mob scene and I think it was really hard to hear and understand. So I think that might be a better thing to do it. Two, I just wanted to dovetail on the comment about the parking lot and the misinformation out there. I am appalled at the amount of misinformation. I had an all my years of being in Sag Harbor. I've been here most of my life. I've never seen so much misinformation about an issue. And I'm all for opposing opinions and debate. But my mailbox and lawn and every corner, I have seen messages that have lied about that parking lot. And I really hope that when I open up the Sag Harbor Express tomorrow, I don't see an ad touting that. Or next week or the week after. Because if that is the case, then the organization that is doing it is trying to deceive. The community. They are lying to the citizens of Sag Harbor. Shame on them. And I'm saying right now, if you don't stop, if it runs again next week. Or if the signs remain, you are knowingly now knowingly and deliberately trying to lie to your neighbor. And if that's the case, shame on you. And specifically, citizens of Sag Harbor website, I've gotten their mailers, I've gotten all sorts of stuff from them. Please stop lying about it and please stop now. Thank you.
There's no question. Okay. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone online, Mr. Fisher?
I think we have someone in the audience.
Oh, okay.
Nobody online?
I just also want to point out, thank you, Chris, for saying, I can't say anything better than what you said. But I also want us to say publicly, thank you to all of the parents. Teachers and the community members who have actually stepped up to the plate and participated in small grassroots efforts to try and move this forward. We couldn't be doing it without you guys. So on the record for everyone to hear, thank you for everything you're doing. This is going to happen.
Thank you. Anyone online, correct, Mr. Fisher?
There was not.
Okay, great. Okay. All right, may I have a motion to convene to executive session to discuss contracts?
So moved.
Second.
We will not, we'll be coming out of executive session to pose regular meaning. No action will be taking place. So, thank you.
Brian?
Yeah, I was Brian, sorry.
Thank you.